Wonderful. Welcome and thank you very much. Welcome everyone to the January 27th zoning workshop group for the town of Newbury. We will probably not do introductions since we don't need to. I think everybody knows everybody at the table.
We have one person in the audience.
Oh, then we will do introductions. My name is Pete Pickles. To my left is...
Mary Stone.
Leslie Matthews.
What do you name?
Larry Murphy.
Martha Taylor.
I'm Stuart Lidle from Town Council, Newbury.
Ah, okay.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Welcome, welcome.
I'm not sure how much this can do to the court.
Well, it was a gamble.
All right. We'll try to make it with your wild being here.
We can describe our outfits.
To be invited.
Sure, yeah.
I'm good, thanks.
Okay. So, we have a couple of things that we're going to be talking about today. First would be our proposed zoning amendments for the April 2020 town meeting and where we are with that. So, kind of an update. So, we can start with wireless. Do we have any update from our consultant?
We don't. I was actually hoping to talk with him this morning and that didn't happen because of other things. So, we're still... They were going to do the computer modeling based to kind of verify their drive-through. Have we met since?
So, Woody, Martha and I met with a consultant whose name is?
David Maxon.
From?
From Isotrop.
Isotrop, which is the contract individual to look at our cell service. And we had a nice, long, in-depth meeting and he was going to go into these two, which was the drive-through.
Right. Well, he'd already done the drive, kind of the drive test in town and it was really interesting. He does all four main carriers. The sprint was so bad that they didn't actually even map that one.
Wow.
So, what the maps he gave us showed is areas where there are, you know, clearly gaps in coverage in town. And so, the next step is they were going to do computer modeling, which is basically verify their drive test requirements. And then we talked at length about updates to the bylaw and there are kind of two components for things that are on private property that could potentially still go through the public, you know, special permit process. For ones that are on public property and rights of ways and things like that, we talked about the possibility of the selectmen doing a grant of... Hammond, I'm sorry, I haven't had a chance to call you back.
Okay.
I didn't even put my mic off. A selectman could grant, do a grant of locations, like what they do with utility poles and things like that. So, that's one of the conversations I wanted to have with town council is what her experience has been in other towns that are updating their wireless. Do they split it out that way? Or, you know, how do they handle it? Just to get some guidance as we're going forward. We talked about, you know, if we build it, will they come? And basically, there's nothing that we can do to necessarily, you know, convince these wireless carriers that they need to come into town. But what they do is when they get complaints about gaps in coverage and things like that, then they will start looking into communities and one of the first things they look at is their bylaw and how strenuous the process is going to be to get approval. So, he's going to be looking at the computer modeling, give us a report and then do, you know, some recommended revisions to the bylaw. And he had already gone through, and I should have printed that out and I didn't, sorry. Gone through the bylaw with a series of questions and recommendations to be...
So, he was pretty thorough on comments, initial first pass through on bylaw with comments and then three of us, four of us were able to discuss that. You know, one of the things here is to try to, when we identify these pockets that are weak areas, we can then identify a site that might be most appropriate for our tower to go. So, we can again, try to be proactive in this process rather than having someone say, "Okay, we need to put one here, X, Y, Z." We can say, "Hey, we can maybe negotiate this." So, we were talking about a couple of different options along those lines that would be beneficial. And, you know, some things that you wouldn't think but were evident, you know, putting up a tower up on a very high hill does not necessarily mean that you're going to get better broadcast. You get better broadcasting out, but below in the valley over that hill, you won't receive any broadcasting. So, we have to think about those things, which is a different way of thinking of this. So, it's not always the high point that's the best point.
Makes sense.
It's the point from where broadcasting is going to be received. So...
Kind of have to look at it, you know, like shadows.
That's...
His next phase was to map out, not just the road, the roads, but...
But the whole areas.
The whole area. Let's where the blind spots are and the shadowing.
Right. He was going to put together what he called a heat map. So, the areas that has a coverage and the areas that don't have coverage throughout town, so not just along the roadways.
So, you know, I think we're very fortunate that we picked this consultant because he definitely knows his industry. And I think we'll come back with some strong recommendations and some thoughts as to what we might want to do going forward for more discussions.
How do we find this firm?
I did some inquiries. I put a query out of the Mass Planers List serve and this guy was recommended by numerous people.
Right. People you've known, reached that?
Yes.
Okay.
And he was also, he had been brought in as our own ZBA's consultant when a special permit application for a cell tower was deployed on a number of years ago. So, he's actually familiar with the town and had, you know, worked on our behalf.
So, it's economical in some ways, more efficient that he knew Newbury?
It certainly helps, you know. It's not foreign territory, but this is what he does. He was actually used to working totally CRB.
So, he was really getting into the details of the details of...
And he likes classical music.
He likes classical music. The thing that we do have to keep in mind though is, you know, we ask them, the question is, you know, what type of priorities is to a carrier?
Right.
And, you know, that's the reality that we have to, you know, take into account that, you know, a carrier might not be jumping at our needs or our desires because it might not be a high priority. So, we just want to kind of be proactive in this process.
Yeah, we could put on the list.
Right.
Can we make them jump?
Yeah.
In other words, does this firm have any leverage in that way to help us out?
We do...
And can we push that process?
We do not have that section.
Okay. Well, you know, somebody needs a favor, something.
We can, no, we can bring it back. It comes down to numbers too.
Right.
It's what their coverage areas, what their, you know, their customer base, customer driven.
If we were 60,000 people, they'd be right on it.
Right.
As close to 6,000.
It's so important to the people who don't have access to get access so that, you know, this is why...
And then, not necessarily a hundred-foot tower or whatever was a priority, they were talking about things on poles.
Right.
And fast poles, but see how that...
It's a good discussion.
Interesting. Okay.
So, that's where we are and I will follow up with him either this afternoon or tomorrow and hopefully we'll have some stuff in place for next Wednesday because we do have to start moving forward with these things.
So, our timetable would be within two weeks. We have to pretty much bring it to our meeting.
Right. And the schedule that I had was that we, the board would need to vote next Wednesday, the 5th, to refer the articles to the selectmen for their meeting the following week. I'm going to take another look at that and see, you know, how much leeway we have. I was conservative the first time around, trying to give us a little bit of wiggle room, but...
Is this a long-duration process?
Getting a zoning amendments before town meeting?
Correct.
It's not necessarily long, but there are, it's a very stringent timeline.
There are steps.
There are steps that need to be followed under Mass general law. And if you, if you miss a deadline or you don't, you know, do something that you're supposed, take some step that you're supposed to do, the attorney general just can get back to us.
Okay.
So, it'll be a wasted effort.
Indeed.
So, we want to make sure that we don't, you know, that we cross all the Ts and dot all the Is and meet our timelines.
So, Martha was able to put out a schedule for us so that we kind of...
Right.
So, we don't know where we're supposed to be with that. And along those lines, the minimum requirements?
Yeah. You're done on the other side.
I'm done unless anybody has any other questions.
I put together, based on our discussion at the last workshop, what I think was the sense of the board in terms of...
Thank you.
The definition or amendments, excuse me, two-dimensional regulations. My memory from our last conversation is regarding the frontage requirements. To add a footnote, regarding the width of the lot to be at least 90% of the required frontage at the front yard setback and also to accommodate a circle at some point on the lot that's 80% of the frontage. Although, the building doesn't have to go within that circle. And we've taken this from other communities. I think principally it was Groveland, I believe, or it was Georgetown.
Well, I think it was Groveland and West Newbury. It's kind of an amalgam of both.
It is. And that seemed to, you know, work for us. And I believe that that was the sentence of this board the last time we met. And also, we talked about amending the sections regarding driveways. Right now, driveways only have to have a minimum width of nine feet. And the thought was that as far as single or two-family homes, was that for lengthy driveways that that width ought to be increased. And I don't know, Martha, I believe you were going to speak to the fire chief about that.
I did, I did speak to the chief. He was going to refer to Keith, who does a lot of his code review, and get back to me. I haven't heard back. I did ask him about the reference that Steve Sawyer made to Mass fire code, that any driveway over 250 feet needs to be 20 feet wide. And I don't have confirmation of that, but I think that, you know, maybe for discussion purposes, we can kind of go...
That seems reasonable. I mean, to my mind, it's whatever the chief is comfortable with, you know.
And he... Go ahead, sorry.
I was just going to say, these are all really public safety measures, I think. You know, assuring adequate access for first use wonders and for any fire trucks being larger vehicles, you know, to any future lot. And then the other issue we had talked about was providing that driveways, including cot stills, culverts, et cetera, be no closer than 10 feet from any property line. Again, think of public safety issue, so you don't have two driveways coming out from the same location, you know. And that was some substance. So, again, I, you know, I hope I captured what we had discussed last time in terms of the board.
So, just for presentation purposes for the public, I think starting from the reverse, going to the first, the third is the easiest to understand, the driveway being 10 feet away from the property line.
Sure.
And I think that makes pretty good sense to everyone. Okay. So, that, I don't think that would be a big discussion point for folks.
Yeah.
Okay. The second about the distance where we have to have a width increase in the driveway, again, that makes pretty good sense because, again, that's a public safety issue. We just go by what the code is from our fire chief and follow that recommendation. So, those two are pretty easy to explain. The first one.
Yeah, that's the more difficult round to head around. And I think, again, it sort of comes back to public safety and I think we can be very candid with the public that we've seen proposals for these very odd-shaped lots that, that create, that access difficulties, even though they might technically be in compliance with the zoning bylaw. So, what we're trying to do is just assure adequate access off of the street from which, you know, the frontage, which is the reason for the setback. And then also that there be a large enough buildable area on the lot to once again accommodate public safety type of issues.
What does that mean now?
What does what mean?
Well, when you say public safety...
And the access by emergency vehicle.
I know what you mean, but for purposes of communication.
Right.
What do you mean when you say public safety?
Access by emergency vehicles.
Okay. So, fire, ambulance and...
Safety of first responders, right.
So, what I want to suggest is this is going to be our trial presentation. So, I want you to break it down so that this is, people don't get caught up in the circular in the space, even though we know what it means. So, think of how you'd want to present it right now at town meeting so that it would be palatable and digestible.
I'd keep it as simple as possible and just say that. And that these are very common provisions in other communities. In fact, if you recall, we had the A and R, it was a preliminary subdivision, where the engineer came forward and provided the 80% circles, not even recognizing it's not what, what our bylaws technically require, but that so many other communities have that same provision. He actually showed it on his preliminary plan.
So, it's a standard that's getting well-accepted.
Yes. I think that's a great...
Based on experience by other communities, which we are benefiting from.
Yeah.
Right. So, it gets, so the overarching issue in presenting it would then be, these issues are, that we will talk about, have to do with public safety.
Yeah.
And public safety means X, Y, and Z. And we looked at other towns and over time and experience, they have learned the following and we're taking that.
I'm hoping she's going to present it.
I just did.
Our communications are...
Yes, I like it.
But it's true.
Yeah.
It's true.
Yeah. No, but you're right, Pete. I think intuitively it's going to be the most difficult amendment for people to grasp by. But ultimately, I mean, this relates directly to subdivision control. And frankly, with subdivision control, I've always felt it's all about its two things, provision of adequate safe access and provision of utilities. And that's really what it comes down to.
So, that's a great way to start the conversation. You know, talking about subdivision control, these are the two primary concerns.
Right.
And you've had years and years of experience in multiple towns, multiple communities dealing with that. And I think it's just a great way to open the conversation and just so people don't get hung up in circles and squares.
Yeah, it's very hard to understand.
Eighty-nine percent.
Yeah.
Say that again, please.
Well, they, when they have the circle in there, that throws everyone for a little bit.
Oh, it's very confusing.
You're talking about 90% and 80% of the bylaw.
Well, I think, I think one thing that we should have is a diagram that would, you know, indicate what a lot would look like. So, that was what I was going to try to put together.
Right, indeed. With the caveat that it must be introduced properly.
Yes.
Because when you start looking at pictures, you're like, mm, and what's that circle? And then you forget what we're doing here. What are we doing here? We're trying to protect the people, the tenant, and get the best for them.
So, when we do this presentation, we do it in kind of a PowerPoint sort of presentation. And our opening discussion is about public safety with the two components and have that kind of continued on the slides as we go forward and why that might be beneficial in words, written words. Because a lot of people don't hear our words.
No, you're right, right. And I think, I think it's important that we don't overdo it, you know, don't oversell it.
Completely, sure.
And probably of these three proposed amendments, the one under discussion probably should be the last on the warrant because we get to talk about public safety in the first two as well and it kind of segues into that.
Cool.
Diagrams, picture diagram would be helpful for some people.
Yeah, I think so. Because for a lot of people, it can be very hard to visualize this, you know, just a very generic.
Yeah. I mean, the other models that we looked at, if you recall, I think it was the sense of the board really wouldn't work in Newbury. One was, I think it was the Newbury Port model, it just required a square or a...
Right, touching the frontage.
Touching the frontage, you know. And then, I think it was Ainsborough, just had a, you had to maintain certain percentage of the setbacks all the way back to the rear property, to the rear of the dwelling, which again, I'm not sure is going to work for us, you know, so...
And then Amesbury was carrying its frontage all the way straight.
Yeah.
That's definitely not going to, not going to work for us.
So, but, you know, I mean, I think with maybe the exception of plugging in the values for the extended driveways, we'll get that from the fire department, I think we're probably ready to send these to the selectmen. And they may have a different take on it. They may come back and not be in favor of, you know, any of these. I don't know.
So, when they're presented to the selectmen, will there be somebody to help lead the discussion?
Well, it's usually me, but if somebody else wants to do it, that would be great. But, you know, what I do usually, I'll, I can show an example. When, when the board has voted to refer things to the selectmen, I write a letter summarizing it. We don't have to have it in final, you know, final absolute language, but just to give them a sense of what it is and why it's being done, why it's being recommended. If we have draft language, like we could provide this to them, then I attach it. But it doesn't need to be in its final form.
Well, I think to open the discussion, I think it's a very good start. And I like your idea of starting simple and then working our way into the discussion. I think that's, that'd probably help with town, town meeting too, if the selectmen are more of this.
And we will have an opportunity to do a dry run for town meeting when they hold the public hearing for this.
Okay.
So, we'll do a PowerPoint for that and, you know, just a bunch of bullet points and then a diagram there and the diagrams go with it. And then that gets fine-tuned for, for town meeting presentation.
Right. So, for purposes of our, our group here, we are behind this proposal to be presented to the selectmen as is.
I think that's the sense of...
And to allow them to have feedback and then let the process go, but we're all behind it. We advocate on behalf of what we're presenting.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, the board will need to take a formal vote on that to refer these articles to the selectmen so that they can refer back for public meeting, for public hearing.
It's, yes, it's a clumsy process, Mary, actually. The reason we have to send it initially to the selectmen is because that's what state statute requires, recognizing that anybody can petition a selectman for a zoning change. Typically, they come from this board, but a private citizen can, in the same way we're doing it, can petition the selectmen who in turn then have the responsibility of referring it to the planning board for a public hearing.
Okay.
So, that's why the yo-yo.
Gotcha. Well, that's cool, but it is cumbersome.
It is, it is. And counterintuitive, wouldn't it?
Yes.
We're sending something to them, asking them to send back, unless we can look at it.
I think, I think this is good. And I think this is a step in the right direction to achieve what we, what our concerns are.
Good.
Thank you, Larry.
So, a couple of things. One thing I do want to run by the chief also is, not that I want to encourage more impervious surface, but because they've been fairly clear that they are looking for 10 feet generally for an emergency vehicle to go in one direction, whether there might be some benefit to increasing the minimum width of the driveway from nine feet to 10 feet.
You mean, for something big?
Even for something short.
Short.
Right. I don't know if you want me to explore that with him or not go there.
Well, you just, you just, with a light bulb, what type of surface would that driveway be?
It could be asphalt, it could be gravel. You know, it needs, it needs to meet certain...
Okay. Impact standards, compressibility.
It's got to be, it's got to be strong enough to carry the weight of a emergency...
So, sand is not an option?
Sand would not be an option.
So, just thinking about, when you mentioned the word impervious.
But gravel in certain cases.
Right.
We're, it's like mine have gravel, high basalt.
Well, like the Regal project will be gravel. Emergency access will be gravel.
Right.
Yeah. Most of those sorts of things, it's already existed, this whole, it's existed as large gravel, right? So...
And so...
So, that is an option. Other concerns?
The only other, E, about the setback from the driveways, I'm wondering, rather than saying we shall come closer than 10 feet to any building property, whether we should have the, the, any building property line or...
Yeah, but that can be, that can be refined. I just took that very much as sand, the seals, by law. It seemed to touch on the issue, but yeah, we can certainly, we can certainly, probably a better way to express it.
Yeah, to the boundaries of any building property or something like that. This is very, thank you.
It is very, thank you very much.
It's a lot, Larry.
Okay. I see a word here that's neat.
Yes.
Stretch code.
So, I think I had mentioned previously that one of the things that we've been looking at from time to time is trying to pursue green communities designation, which we are one of only two communities in the Merrimack Valley Planning Region now that's not a green community. There are benefits for us, both in terms of an initial grant that we get just for becoming designated and then grant opportunities after that. When this was presented to the selectmen a couple of years ago, I think the biggest concern they had was the adopting the stretch code, which is an energy code. And it has to do, back when we were talking about it in 2009, there was, there was kind of a big, big difference between the basic energy code and the stretch code in terms of compliance requirements and burden on builders and homeowners. It's much less now. The stretch code is more performance-based. There are certain things that you need to do, but Senator Johnson, before he left, had said that he would definitely advocate for it. And I'm going to ask our current, our acting building inspector how he feels about it because I think Merrimack is one of the communities that adopted it. The language is basically straight out, it's kind of model language. And again, I apologize, I was hoping to get it printed out today and I couldn't, so I will, I'll circulate it to all of you. And that will be a discussion with the selectmen to see whether they want to pursue the green communities.
Right. And you did mention the last time, which I found impressive, was that in 2009, we were all in an economic downturn.
Right.
So, you're, you, the town was looking at every line item.
Yes.
Indeed. The other statistic you threw out at the time was how many communities in Massachusetts currently have, currently are green communities versus how many are not. Do you remember that? 350-something versus...
Well, we have 351 communities and 270 have adopted, 300 green communities have adopted the stretch code.
Right. So, we're one of the very few who have done this, right? So, let's get on it.
How did you remember those numbers?
I, because it was impressive.
Excellent.
I mean, the 350 stuck out, of course, but then I knew the two, higher two number. I mean, it's like, what happened? And then Martha explained to us that you're in an economic downturn, everyone's suffering in 2009, particularly in real estate. Now, you're not getting the revenues. Now, you got a big problem. You should look at every single tiny little thing you're spending, right? Water bottles, whatever. That's all.
So, now it's more performance-based.
It is, yeah, it's more performance-based.
Which is beneficial.
Right. Which makes sense.
Good.
You know, and at the time, I think, and it only, you know, I think at the time it was estimated that it might cost in 2009, maybe a difference of $10,000, which was a lot at that time.
That's a lot.
And, you know, not, not so much now.
Yeah, technologies have changed too and materials have changed at the most.
Yeah.
So, good. So, I think that that's a big thing to bring to the selectmen to see if they'd be interested in endorsing that.
But I think the, you know, the other, the other aspects of the green communities designation, I think are not, probably not quite as, I don't want to say controversial, it's not that this is controversial, but, you know, probably don't raise as many questions.
Well, we're looking at massive climate change in the last decade and everybody's got to get on the bandwagon. Well, that's political, sorry. It would be more beneficial to everyone if we adopted certain things that help the climate. Except today, political.
Thank you, Larry.
Whatever.
Anyone else comment on the concerns of this?
No, the only other thing is we're missing out on some grants, right?
Some money.
Because we haven't adopted it.
Right. What is that, basically? The money piece that, what are you referring to? That we're missing out on?
And through the green, well, first of all, we get, I don't remember offhand what the initial sum that we get when we, if we achieve designation, something like a $130,000 or something, just for becoming designated.
Wow.
And then through the green communities program, there are grant opportunities. If we, we've already done this, but say if we wanted to change out our streetlights or do upgrades to, you know, town properties to make them more energy efficient or something.
Okay.
Okay. Then I think this is going to be going, oh, go Larry.
Yeah.
You're bringing this to us from the ZBA?
Yeah.
Building height definition.
Yeah, I'm liaison to the ZBA, you know, and they have expressed, we had some discussion about their concerns over how rooftop decks on Plum Island relate to the building height. And it's easy to understand their concern, wrapping the head around a fix is a little more difficult. One thing that was suggested, and I'm not suggesting by any stretch that that's the position of the ZBA, there's a very brief suggestion about banning rooftop decks altogether. I just don't think that's a realistic way to approach it. And Martha tells me that that was tried some years ago.
Well, we looked at the definition of building height some years ago and it was pretty controversial.
Yeah. Here's, here's what we have. This is from the PIOD overlay district excerpts. Just show how we define building height.
Thank you.
And this, this is not the entire PIOD, but it's some examples. And also for comparison purposes, because it's the island, we have to think about what Newburyport is doing too. And their language, although not identical to ours, is very similar. And I don't see the practical difference in the application. And if we were to do something, that's.
So it's the same maximum building height?
The same maximum building height. If you look at the definition of building height, it's, the language is slightly different. I think it gets you, I'll ask our resident architect, but I think it gets us to the same place.
It actually doesn't.
It doesn't? Okay, then.
Does a roof deck constitute a third story?
Well, that's, that's the concern.
Okay.
Because they're defining it as the mean height between the roof ridge and the eaves.
Right.
Okay? And also as it relates to the mean, what's the word I'm looking for? Grade elevation.
Right, right.
Okay. So what do you do when now someone comes up and they have their 35 foot, they've reached their 35 feet, now they want to add a deck on top of that, which is going to raise it? Do you include the deck as part of the definition of the roof? I'm not quite sure.
Right, or you consider it an appurtenance or something like that, which I think for a time, Newburyport was looking at, say if you built a cubicle large enough to actually give access to a roof deck, if it was under 10% of the roof area, that would be considered an appurtenance. It wasn't being counted in the, in the mean grade to mean height of roof calculation. It's, as I was saying to Larry, it's one of those things that I think the towns have come to interpret slightly differently as they have lot coverage and a few other things. We started out in the same place except for lot area when the PIOD was drafted. And over time, the two communities have kind of interpreted some of the provisions differently.
So explain to me, Martha, please, in my non-architectural head, how does Newburyport get to a different place than us?
Okay, so Newburyport is just measured from the mean grade elevation, so that's average grade at the perimeter to the mean roof elevation. So that would, you know, that sort of assumes you've got one roof.
Right.
Ours is to the mean height of the highest roof. And the reason we ended up going away from the mean roof elevation is because there were, and I don't want to cast discursions on my profession, but architects were being very creative in how they were doing roofs. And so you could have, you know, say here's, you're always upside down, but you're building, you know, here's a roof coming up. So ordinarily, it would be from here to, you know, here would be mean grade to mean height of roof. But then they would, you know, they'd start doing other kinds of roof.
Yeah, I was wondering.
Something like that.
You cover the roof deck, right?
Right, so.
Yeah.
You know, if they have something, you know, something coming out from here, maybe there's a dormer coming out. And again, I apologize, it's upside down, so.
Variable roof.
There are a lot of variable roof heights, which is making it very, very difficult. And ending up in some, I mean, the worst case, you know, you could actually do, I shouldn't say this, but you know, an A-frame that was 70 feet high. And your mean, your mean height is here, but your top height is actually up here. So the definitions change to try to avoid that. So, you know, maybe then the mean height gets to be, you know, at this point. The effort was to try to keep it from being outrageously high.
Martha, a gentleman who I met at Plum Island who checked stickers.
Steve, may I ask?
Steve.
Yeah.
He said, when I introduced myself to him, he said, "By the way, could the planning board please address the issue of people making third floors with creative roofing?" In other words, there are three stories because the roof then, they have rooms up there, right?
Well, and that really goes more to the building commissioner and the plans that are put in place. So it doesn't, so what they're supposed to do now, you know, they're allowed to have two stories by right and then, and then the height limitation. And people have, you know, say created a small room up here, which is 69 feet.
Right.
Room of 70 square feet to access a roof deck, but they're not supposed to create any other living space up there.
But he said they do.
But, you know, the tie, you know, the roof ties are supposed to be below code ceiling height. And yes, they do. I mean, they do. It's really a code enforcement issue as opposed to.
Gotcha.
Something that I think the planning board can really dictate.
Right, but doesn't it have something to do with the roof?
So it.
If you explain what roof height means? Or is that just too arduous?
It's, it's really interior, it's really interior in terms of that space as opposed to the height.
Okay.
Structure.
Interesting. Gotcha.
So with the potential for variable roofs and we're trying to get away from that happening and then defining something that makes sense, the ZBA is looking for some guidance. What's that process?
You know, I think it's a tough one and I would be loathe to even, I mean, I think that, and what we tried to do before was to, we looked for a while at actually setting a maximum height on the island.
Of any structure.
Of any structure.
Cubicles, whatever. Roof decks. In other words, the top of the top of the top of the building.
Right, or, you know, at least the main peak. As we looked at, you know, say you do a 12-foot floor-to-floor, floor-to-floor, and you have a 12-foot pitch roof or something, what would that get you up to?
Right.
And it just, it got to be extremely controversial.
Right.
And there were issues, if we're going to do this on the island, do we need to do this on the mainland? Because the mainland doesn't have the same issues. And then how does this compare to what's happening in Newburyport? So I'm not sure that this is a quick fix. And I'm a little hesitant to, I mean, I think you have to take a lot of factors into consideration.
So breaking that down, I think we raised it from Newburyport, mainland versus, because those are, I think, different discussions. So if the ZBA is looking for guidance for things that are going on in the island, I think that's one standard, perhaps, to be developed.
Big piece of their business are requests for findings on the island.
Right.
Usually with, if someone's increasing the footprint or they're going out, you know.
So does it make sense to entertain that one segment, Martha? And identify that that's what we're talking about, or that's where they're, where they're coming from, that's where they're looking for guidance?
Well, I mean, I think that's, we've talked from time to time of doing a greater, potentially a greater overhaul of the PIOD, which I don't, personally, I don't think we can do independent of Newburyport. You know, what might make, rather than us trying to kind of conjecture, just have a meeting of both boards.
Yes.
And.
Yeah, it would have to be in the evening because they, they work. So I invited them, you know, to this. I know at least two out of the, out of the three members work. I'm not sure about them.
Right, so.
They ever meet on weekends?
What did you just say?
Not typical. No, but I mean, if we could even have a joint meeting perhaps.
It would do so well.
So a joint meeting might be beneficial?
Yeah, no, I think it would be, because I think it would help to hear more from them in terms of what their concerns really are and whether they themselves have some thoughts on how this could be dealt with. You know, Eric's an architect. He's probably looked at it in several different ways.
Would it be something that could be presented in advance in writing? In other words, we have this discussion at our workshop and like to get your thoughts on it in advance of probably scheduling a meeting, something like that? Or does that make any sense?
I would chime, just because.
Well, I don't, I don't know that we necessarily have to submit a formal letter to them.
No.
Just talk to Susan and get us on the agenda.
Right.
Actually, more of an email.
Yeah.
Shot. We thought this came up. You have any thoughts on it?
Well, Larry's bringing it to us from the ZBA, so basically this is a request coming to us. And so we're basically saying.
They're looking for our help to solve it.
Oh, okay.
And frankly, we're a little bit also, well, we're between building commissioners too, which doesn't help, because certainly at some point, when we get a permanent building commissioner, again, we'd want to get him or her in on what their take on the appropriate, you know, interpretation of the definition.
Right, right. And depending on where he or she is coming from, you know, might have a good definition.
Exactly.
Already in hand. I mean, if switches is pretty good, we've looked at that before. Because it does deal with a lot of, it deals with a lot of kind of appurtenant kinds of things that could happen on the roof and their clear exclusions, like chimneys and antennas and things like that. But it's one that might be worth taking a look at again. I'm not sure of others. But I think I would actually turn largely to Eric to say, you know, okay, you guys are bringing us this request. You're an architect. What, you know, what are you thinking in terms of how, what would help you?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, he did say he was going to try and find some examples from other communities that might help us. So I think a joint meeting would be appropriate. Realistically, getting it done for the spring, I don't know.
I would say absolutely not.
Because of time constraints?
Yeah, time constraints. And it's going to require a lot of back and forth. And I think it would be good to have our permanent building inspector on board so that he or she is somebody who buys into.
So with the first steps, we'll have a combined meeting or have an opportunity for both boards to meet together, stop the discussion, see where things fall up, fall into place and then go from there.
I think that's a plan.
And how personal is the issue?
It's something that I think has been sort of percolating with them for a while.
Okay.
I know they spoke with George, he was, George was the liaison before, before me. But I've only been a liaison, liaison for a few months, so.
So.
It's something that they've been struggling with.
It seems to come up on their agenda.
Yeah.
All the time.
So just a question to you all, would you, if we're going to do it, would you be open to going to one of their meetings or would you prefer to have them?
I'm fine either way.
Or to have it on an offer?
When do they meet?
They meet the third, was it the third Thursday?
Okay.
So we meet the first and the third Wednesday?
Correct. So we are a little off this month because of the holiday.
Right.
So their next meeting should be February 16th, uh, 15th is, no, no.
February 15th?
16th.
So wouldn't it make sense to try to work our way into their agenda?
I'm in January, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The 20th of February.
Okay.
So would it make sense for us to try to insert ourselves into their agenda as opposed to setting up a very separate meeting with everybody going to another place? Would that be better for everybody?
Well, it might depend on their agenda. They have all of those public hearings.
Right.
So maybe the best thing to do then would be for me to coordinate with Susan.
I think so.
And see what she thinks would work from their point of view.
And Susan is?
Their administrator, the ZBA administrator.
Susan Lee was in here earlier, so.
Right, I apologize. I'm trying to get up to speed here. And then I could, we'll get it back by you guys and take it from there.
Sounds good.
And probably it would be good to have, it has to be a larger discussion, which we've done a couple of times in the past. Any issues that come before them that are kind of repetitive things that they would like to see addressed through zoning.
A larger discussion.
A larger discussion.
A larger discussion. Would that include any other boards in this larger discussion?
I think that might be another larger, an even larger discussion.
Okay, let's just dive into that discussion.
That's a really good piece.
Is it a discussion? Okay. It is an issue of a camel being horse designed by Canadians at that point.
Good piece, one of my favorite things.
You know, we've got camels hanging out there.
I think there's a very, you know, there's a very specific request here. In the past, we have had some joint meetings between the ZBA, planning board and the building commissioner to discuss things that are, you know, sort of nitty gritty zoning things.
Okay. So you reach out to Susan and we'll see where things go from there.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you, Larry.
Thanks, Larry.
Mary, I don't think we have much to go further with solar at this point in time.
No. Is anybody interested in going to the solar research on February 7?
I can't have a conflict, although I'm fascinated by the.
So I am planning on going and I can report back.
There's a possibility.
It's February 7th, a Friday.
It's a Friday, yeah.
And that was in Worcester?
That's in Worcester, right. So I think since we're not going to be dealing with that for the spring town meeting, maybe for, if we have any other workshops before spring, just drop that one off for now. I put it on here as a reminder. One more time, this is something we're working on. But it's longer term.
Continuing along, housing related, inclusionary zoning. Where do you want to go with this discussion?
I don't know. I mean, I think we've already kind of filled the board in on the discussions with, with Nate that are ongoing. I mean, for MVPC.
We talked about this on Wednesday.
Yeah, sorry about that.
No, no, no. So I think we're going to do a little discussion with Nate. He's reaching out to Habitat for Humanity, right? And the thought was maybe something constructive could be done with that and maybe doing something with our school aspect for building project. And then just basically trying to open up the discussion with that organization to see if there's anything we can creatively draw on, along those lines. So that was with that component. As far as inclusionary zoning, I think that's a discussion that's still taking place.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think probably a good starting point would be to look at the zoning by laws of some other communities that have had an inclusion rate and have our own discussion about it.
So that was a follow-up that will be taken place with MVPC, with, it's already in existence.
And again, this is, this is longer term. It's not for the spring.
So, yeah, these are projects that will take quite some time to do that to.
Right. And you always think, oh, we can do that in the fall and then the summer goes by. And it's just, it's hard to do. The timeframe to get something on for the fall town meeting is often very compressed. And the other thing that we were looking at in terms of housing, and this gets into perhaps the bigger conversation with all the boards, is a table of use regulations where we, where we allow multifamily, where we allow mixed use, what we allow for multifamily right now, because we don't allow anything greater than four units except through an OSRD. And then there's a bigger conversation related to that is kind of looking at the table of use regulations and the uses that are allowed and not allowed, the uses that are allowed by special permit. And that may be something for all the boards to take up at some point. And that may be something for all the boards to take up at some point.
Which might be something that we want to plant the seed about having some of those discussions now, which is where they go. Martha circulated, what was the draft that was due today?
The budget was due today.
And there was a draft cover letter though?
Yes.
And it had some talking points, objectives for the, for our board. And one of the objectives that we, I think we added to that was trying to explore measures to explore housing options, alternative housing options, as we talked about on Wednesday. How can we maybe rethink this a little differently for affordable housing in our community? So that would be one of our objectives that we've been working on this year, trying to get creative. Because we kind of appreciate that the one mandate doesn't necessarily fit the model of our community. Do you want to say anything more about that?
I don't think so right now.
Okay, good. So that's table of use regulations, does anybody have any questions about that? Okay. Other things that we might want to discuss in our next steps?
So I think for next steps, we really need to, I'll take another look at the schedule, but we, we kind of need to get our ducks in a row in terms of the ones that we're proposing for the town meeting.
Wireless and dimensional.
Wireless, dimensional, and the stretch, possible stretch code. I should be now meeting with town council tomorrow morning, so I can, I want to review what you put together with her and then also just talk in general about the wireless communications with her and get her feedback, so I can report on that. And then what I can do for Wednesday is put together, you know, assuming that there's a sense of the board right now that these are the ones that we want to move forward for the spring, put together a cover letter that would then go to the selectmen with the board's recommendations.
So I think everyone's comfortable with those two components?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. Us?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think we'll go forward to that. So.
Since we have an audience, do you want to ask if anybody's?
Awesome, thank you. Does anyone have any concerns that they would like to bring before our workshop?
Or questions about things that were on the agenda?
I do, but I won't wait until other people.
Thank you.
I came because my ears picked up at the invention of inclusionary housing. Just because I know there's a housing crisis in state, in the country, in our area. So what would be the best way for me, as a citizen who's concerned about this, to kind of learn about where Newbury is around, I assume where you are in the planning, what's happening, what's been considered, what barriers there might be?
I would suggest actually first looking at the housing production plan.
The housing production plan?
Which was, it's part of a regional housing production plan that Merrimack Valley Planning Commission finalized last year. And there's a section for Newbury in it, which talks, has a lot of demographic data. And that would probably be kind of a good overall document to look at, so I can, I can send you the link.
Okay, thanks. Are we definitely moving forward with something with Habitat? At what stage is that?
Um.
So those are all basically introductory conversations that are taking place?
Oh, okay.
So I'll try to backfill, I think maybe part of your question, how can we try to make affordable housing occur in town? And the one model that's coming forward is a 40, you know, the concept of 40B. 40B has, you know, some limitations in our community, just because of locations, appropriate soils are separate. Our infrastructure is somewhat limited, so we don't have water and sewage like a lot of other towns that can just plot down big, big components. So it's been difficult, I think, to get traction in that arena. The second component is so much of our community has been, as properties are sold, into maybe four or five parcels or one large parcel. So there might be a large home, and as all these homes are built, that kind of pushes us further and further on what our goal from a state mandate for affordable housing is. So we're kind of, we have these two issues that are going on, it's hard to develop it. And then what's getting developed is pushing us further away from where we want to be. So we talked at our last planning meeting about, we do have one instrument that is available to our towns, very unique. We have an accessory, correct me if I'm using incorrect language, accessory apartment allowance within our current structure, which allows for a detached or attached accommodation that has to be within a certain size configuration of the original structure that would allow for people to age in home comfortably with someone else living there or another family member living. And it's something that is allowed to occur within our community. In a lot of communities, you can't do that, they're not allowed. Because our community was kind of forward-thinking and kind of putting this provision into place. And now I think this is an opportunity for us to kind of really promote that thought process of people are thinking about they're wanting to stay in their primary home, and they have the ability to do something, or they want a family member to maybe join them at that primary location. This is a tool that is available.
I have a question about that.
Yes.
Is availability, so I live in, it's a thing called altrem, right? You know, and we're on septic. So I don't know how common that is throughout Newbury, but I know in our near area, I would think the use of a septic system would limit having an additional apartment. You know, if we have a double lot, for example, and we have room to build another apartment, but I don't know if my septic system.
It might not be rate limiting. And I think that has to be evaluated by what the, what the current size of the septic is, what the current size of the home is with regards to bedrooms, because that's how septics are calculated.
Right, right.
So if you reduced the number of bedrooms in one unit and added another, so it's the same number of bedrooms, it might, there might be ways.
There might be ways to do that. I mean, there are other, the bylaw also sets a minimum house size for having an accessory unit. It has to be on the same electrical and septic as the existing, as a primary dwelling. And there are other, you know, other things, but that is certainly, you know, one, one way that we're hoping to at least increase housing options.
Do we have the option, you know, are we zoned, you know, some of the areas that are further out where you see these large lots and large houses, are they zoned so they have to be large, or can we revisit zoning to actually allow for smaller lots? If there's, if there was the will in the community to do that, a type of more infill?
I mean, that could be done if there seemed to be, you know, some appetite for doing, for doing that. We actually tried to rezone your neighborhood years ago to make your lots more conforming, and in a sense that was, it wasn't wanted, but.
Well, that's, that's the rub. So I don't know, you know, I tend to, you know, I recognize that if there's an initiative on one level, there also needs to be enough community support. And sometimes you don't know until you get out there and start talking about it and trying to organize if people are interested. Is the whole site, I'll ask one more question, then I'll be done. Is the whole, you know, originally when we were, not originally, but so many years ago when they were looking at the village of Little River, is development at that area still in play?
The majority of the site now has solar panels on it for the next 18 years now, probably. Part of it, I mean, and you're right, it's a prime, it would be a prime parcel for development. There's still a portion that might be available if somebody were interested in doing something there.
And does the town, you know, is the option the town playing a direct development role even there, or we just don't have the resources to do anything like that?
And we're not, not at this point, we've been, you know, talking about ways that we might be a little bit more proactive.
Okay, one more. Another thing I've wondered about, and I don't know, again, if this is a common enough occurrence that it could actually open up some housing stock, but for example, in my neighborhood, their house, this house has been foreclosed on and is just sitting there.
What is your neighborhood?
Behind Old Town Hall.
Okay, so what's called a Montgomery Park neighborhood?
Montgomery Park.
Yeah. And this house is just, he's sitting there owned by the company that, that bought it from the bank, and that's their business, is to hold on to these houses and then turn them over and et cetera. Is there any clause in the state legislature or anything that allows a town to, you know, preemptively buy foreclosed properties and then turn them into? I, I use the word truly affordable because of, you know, the term affordable housing among housing advocates is not usually considered affordable. You know, like affordable housing in Newbury, according to 40B formulas, is not affordable for a lot of people who work in our schools and things like that. So I'll use the term truly affordable. Is there a capacity to, for a town to somehow have first option to buy a property like that and then use it as some type of housing?
There's, there's no vehicle I'm aware of that would grant the town a legal first option on a piece of property like that. I think there are ways that the town can go about buying property to create housing, but it's very time-consuming, very clumsy, requires town meeting approval, might even have to go out to bid or something, I'm not sure. So it's not an easy, it's not an easy thing to do.
Right, and so there's no state legislation around that? And then is there an option of, okay, that's a good question, this will really be my final question. I'm sorry. Okay. I know that some larger communities such as Netucket and Somerville and so on, I might not have the exact terminology, but they're, have pushed for, I don't know if it's called, some type of waiver or home rule, you know, processes that I think, for example, could we increase local transfer taxes, you know, real estate transfer taxes at times, you know, you know, when houses are sold or appointed development, especially, you know, for higher end houses in order to get more stock for affordable housing? And is so, does that have to be a home rule thing that goes through the legislature?
Well, the home rule legislation begins at town meeting. And it is the home rule amendment to the state constitution that allows communities to petition the state under certain circumstances for special legislation that just, it becomes the law for your community.
Right.
I don't, can't imagine that you would get support at the state house for increasing, say, real estate transfer taxes just for one community. Because, you know, the difficulty in administering that at the registry of deeds, I think that's what you're talking about. That said, you can petition the legislature for other forms of relief, you know, which might include increased real estate taxes. It's going to be a tough sell at a town meeting.
That'd be really tough across the board, real estate.
But the procedure you're talking about is so-called home rule legislation, and it is permitted.
Yeah, and, and there is, in the housing advocacy community, there's some building momentum to not have that be community-specific, but to, in other words, to have it be community-specific, but, but have it not dependent on legislative approval. So there's, that might change with luck.
Yeah, that'll have to come out of Beacon Hill.
Right, right.
There's been a lot of legislation over the past few years that it sort of gets up to a certain point, but then never gets over the, over the finish line. Trying, you know, trying to do away with the two-thirds majority requirement for zoning changes and things like that, or for, at least for zoning changes that would facilitate affordable housing.
Home rule legislation's a tricky subject. It typically, more typically, you see it in the, in the context of adopting a town charter or something like that, you know, that's very specific to your community. I know I used to work for Andover, and two years ago, they tried to put through as home rule legislations and real estate tax relief for seniors, and it just never got out of the state house. Yeah, it never got out of the state house, you know, even though it passed town meeting.
Yeah, I'm not sure what happened in Netucket with that. And of course, they'd have some very high-end real estate to, you know, but we do too. Depending on where your cutoff point is.
My first name, I'm sorry.
Pam.
Pam, you may be very interested in the Boston Foundation's housing report that recently came out as an overarching view of what's going on and how other communities are dealing with the issues that you brought up.
Yes, thank you.
So you might want to go to the Boston Foundation website and check out their new housing report.
Thank you, so that'll be it for my question.
So one other thing on Habitat, we did have conversations with Habitat and some local people who were working with them. Over the past couple of years, they were, they were trying to find a couple of parcels in town that they might acquire from us to build a home, and unfortunately, all the ones that they were looking at were, turned out really not to be, not to be buildable or not suitable. But even so, we can't just give it to them. You know, it has to go through an RFP process or a, an auction process. You could tailor the RFP to say it should be a nonprofit community or, you know, corporation or something.
But they're not buildable because they didn't park?
I think one, one was an issue with Riverfront, it basically had a perennial stream going through it, so there was, you know, Riverfront. I don't know if there were also perk issues.
And Habitat builds, they don't just rehab, have a change existing houses?
I think they do some rehab as well. I think they do like schools, things like that.
Oh, right, larger things, okay, well, thank you for your patience, everybody.
Thanks, Pam. Thanks for your interest.
Do you have any questions in the back?
I do have one, if you go back to the proposed zone changes, the next step is to go before the board of selectmen, is that correct?
I can try, I can try to handle this. We will submit our recommendations to the board of selectmen, they will say, yes, we have interest in doing that. And then they refer back to the planning board. At that time, then the planning board will have a public hearing about the topic, and then from there?
Right at the final and submit it to the selectmen for inclusion on the warrant for town meeting.
So it kind of goes back and forth a little bit.
It has to get posted too, right?
Well, the public hearing would be, gets posted twice in the paper.
And then?
Right, right, and then the warrant itself gets posted.
And then even at town meeting, any zoning change requires a two-thirds majority voting, so it's, it's a, it's a high bar. It's a high bar.
Did that answer your question?
It does, when, this will go to the board of selectmen when, their next meeting?
Possibly.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
You know, the, the planning board is going to have to vote to basically refer to the selectmen.
I'm obviously interested, because I am interested in the zoning changes that might happen.
Right, right.
I'm just trying to stay informed as well.
So, and if everything seems to be in order, the, the board might vote potentially next Wednesday to refer the zoning amendments to the selectmen, who would then put it on their agenda for their next meeting. So that would be, I don't worry.
I think 11th is scheduled.
I think that's right, yeah.
February 11th.
If not, then we'd probably be looking at the dates after that.
Thank you very much for it, appreciate it.
So, next steps, do you want to schedule a little workshop to continue our discussion and/or add new topics to our discussion?
I guess the question is now, how, how much you want to dovetail that with actually getting ready for, for town meeting?
So I'm open for discussion. Would you like to, what are your thoughts?
It's really up to you guys.
People.
For another workshop?
And definitely what we're talking about, to what's coming down the pipe.
I'm pretty wide open except for Tuesday days.
Yeah, I am, and I'm certainly available. At this point, while we might have a better sense of what we want to talk about after this goes to the selectmen, see what their attitude is, but yeah. Yeah, well, it might, maybe, should be, maybe think about talking about it next Wednesday.
Okay.
For a meeting, yeah. See, see where, where we are at. If we're ready to refer it to the Selectmen, then it might make some sense. And if something comes up and Mike, Mike hasn't met with Town Council on these yet, so that, that could change the dynamics a little bit.
Right, right.
Depending on what she says. Although that said, I suppose we could pick a date for another workshop and if it's unnecessary, just cancel it.
I just kind of like the idea of the workshops and having discussions about...
Keep, keep things going.
Projects that we want to keep on our radar rather than things falling off.
Well, I, I think we get a lot more done on zoning bylaw changes, doing it in this format, rather than trying to stick it into a meeting where we might have two public hearings.
Right, absolutely.
You know?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, I support that.
So, do you want to look at, say, tentative date?
So...
Our meeting's on the fifth, right?
The fifth and nineteenth. Would you want to look at, the seventeenth is President's Day. Are we closed on that day?
Uh, yes, we're closed that day.
Do we want to look at the twenty-fourth, which is on Monday?
Good, yeah, I'm also looking, you know, if, if we stayed on the original schedule, refer to the Selectmen next week, have them refer it back to us for public hearing. Be looking at holding, I think we were originally talking about holding the public hearing on March fourth, which might be a little, I think that's optimistic. Maybe it's the eighteenth. But yeah, the twenty-fourth, I think would make some, I'm just trying to think of what makes sense in terms of this timing and schedule.
Because I think the third, the third, the tenth might be too soon.
Yeah, I think.
Okay, let's, let's, let's show the chief for the twenty-fourth, twenty-fourth of February. Do you want to go for one o'clock once again?
Seems to work well.
So, that's February twenty-fourth, having a little car. Great. Wonderful. Well, I appreciate everyone's participation. I think, like Larry said, I think it's very helpful to have these discussions and actually process and think and articulate concerns. And it gives us a little bit of time in between. Anything else? But I guess I have a fifteen minute.
I'm moving to the journal.
Great. Second discussion. On favor?
Hi.